By the power of your word, the heavens were created. You created everything that we see. And in your word, you say all things that you have created is good. And so, motherhood, father, is an expression of the love of God for humanity. Through being a woman and being a mother, we show the love of God to our children. It is the gateway for every human being, father, in what they are going to become. Today, in our nation, Lord, there is so many mothers that are in need today of a breakthrough, of a new day. It is our prayer collectively. Your word says in Matthew, where two and three of you agree on anything, it will be given unto you. Today, we come in agreement of prayer for the mothers of this nation, for every woman in every place where she finds herself. We pray for the Lord to come through for us in a miraculous and in a marvelous way. That which was, will never be. A new day for a woman somewhere, somewhere in a shack, somewhere in a flat, somewhere. Today, we ask for a miracle in our nation, a miracle, a revival, that you will touch the women of this country in a new and in a fresh way by the Holy Spirit. When others say it cannot be, you are the God that makes all things possible. We say to the nation of South Africa, it is possible for God to make new things for the women of this country. And we profess and we declare and we claim it in that mighty name of Jesus, our Lord and Savior. Amen and amen.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you very much. And once again, Happy Mother's Day to all our women, to all our mothers that have sacrificed their family time and come and be part of this public hearing today. We are supposed to get a welcoming address by the council, but they are not here. So on behalf of the National Assembly, on behalf of the Basic Education Portfolio Committee, we are welcoming you to this hearing. We thank you for coming and be part of taking decisions for your children's future. It's a Sunday, it's a family day. You have decided to be here. We are very grateful that you want to be this, you want to be the part of this historical moment. I'm going to allow members to introduce themselves here on the table so that you know who is here with us today.
Thank you, Chairperson. Good afternoon, Pine Town. Huiya midach. Happy Mother's Day to the mothers. And thank you for sacrificing a Sunday, a Mother's Day, to come here. But it shows the true value of mothers. You know, we fight for education of our children. My name is Marina Fensal, and I am a member of the National Assembly, the Sixth Parliament. And I'm a member of this Basic Education Committee elected here by the Democratic Alliance. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, everybody. Good afternoon. Sanbonani. Huiya midach. My name is Makonile Noteata. I'm a member of parliament, serving in the National Assembly. I am elected to parliament and deployed to this Portfolio Committee on Basic Education by the Democratic Alliance. Again, Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers that are in here and those that are watching from home. Thank you so much.
Huiya mora. Good morning. My name is Mari Sukas. And I want to also wish all the mothers here Happy Mother's Day, Blessed Mother's Day. And I'm from the Western Cape. I am serving in the National Assembly. And my organization is the African Christian Democratic Party, ACDP. Thank you.
Morning. Sanbonani. My name is Shelimu Koto. I come from Northwest. I've been deployed by the Economic Freedom Fighters as a member of the National Assembly. I'm also serving in the Basic Education Portfolio. Thank you.
Malibongwe. Malibongwe. Watinda Bafazi. Watinda Bafazi. Happy Mother's Day to all mothers who are here. And I'm not going to do like women do, that when it's Father's Day, they wish women, Father's Day. A happy Father's Day. I think this thing, honorable Sukas, of confusion around gender roles, starts with Father's Day. Because women are wished a happy Father's Day because they are single mothers. I'm not going to do that with single fathers. They are not mothers, they are fathers. My name is Honorable Bafu Zeyabo. I'm a member of the National Assembly, the Sixth Parliament, which was elected in 2019. I'm a member of the Basic Education Portfolio Committee. I'm deployed to parliament by the oldest liberation movement on the continent of Africa, the African National Congress. And I am from Gauteng. Thank you very much.
Sanbonani. Happy Mother's Day to all mothers. My name is Lucy Wengubane. I'm a member of the KZN Legislature, saving on the portfolio of our education. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you, Honorable Chair. Greetings to the honorable members. My name is Mbalishinga. I am the MPL in the KZN Legislature, serving in the Education Portfolio Committee. Sengha etagengitingi sandawana for amarizinzazi wai. Seabong.
Good afternoon, everyone. I greet you all with the international greeting of peace and welcome to the members sitting at the table from the National Assembly to the wonderful KwaZulu-Natal today. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Imran Kika. I am a member of the KwaZulu-Natal Provincial Legislature, or commonly known as the Provincial Parliament. I serve on the Education Portfolio Committee amongst other things. Chairperson, you would have noted that my honorable members sitting to my right did not introduce their political parties. Like I said yesterday, we are not accustomed to this. However, I will. I am deployed to the Legislature by the Democratic Alliance. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Now, we represent the people and we are sent by political parties. So that's why we tell, I'm Bongi Wempingokekab, from the Northern Cape, representing the ANC, chairing this committee. I'm going to allow the DBE, Mr. Ndebe, to just give the aim of the bill. This bill is their bill, it's the department's bill. We are facilitating it to pass it to an act so that they take... So whatever that you say, you must say, no, you must not say "you, parliament", you must say "you, DPE, you, them". It's their bill. We are just making things easy for the education sector to proceed if they proceed. To proceed if they proceed. Thank you very much, Mr. Ndebe.
Thank you very much, Program Director, Honorable Chairperson, Honorable Members from the National Assembly, Honorable Members from the Provincial Legislature. Ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. Good afternoon. You can't be angry so early. My name is James Ndebe. I'm the Chief Director at the Department of Basic Education, responsible for school governance matters, including districts. It's true, Honorable Chairperson, that the bill comes from the Department of Basic Education. We wrote the bill to request parliament to pass it for us so that we can run schools differently. You are aware that our education system is run by the South African Schools Act. But since the Schools Act was enacted in 1986, there has been a lot of changes worldwide. And there has been gaps that needed to be closed. Hence, we request parliament to look at this bill and allow us to effect those changes. Those changes were brought about the fact that there are new developments that are not covered in SASSA. There have been a lot of court cases that the department has been involved in, which necessitate that we change some of the issues. And there has also been our own observation as a Department of Education that there are things that will not change unless the law gets changed. And it is for this reason that you have a bill in front of you, which in the true sense is aimed at making sure that the South African Schools Act is aligned to the constitution of the country. So you're going to get things around central procurement in that bill. You're going to hear a lot about homeschooling. You're going to get major enclosure of schools. You're going to get things around these agreements. We're going to talk about subsidies to independent schools. We're going to talk about how additional responsibilities are given to school governing bodies. Issues of corporal punishment are going to be in that bill. But I need to pay attention to some of the few that we regard as sticking points. You must have heard that in KZN specifically, there are 900 schools that are affected by the rationalization, major enclosure of schools. That aspect is not well captured in the South African Schools Act. There are things that the department needs to do. And it is in this bill where we're beginning to line out exactly what an education department must do if it has to implement the rationalization, the major and the closure of school. So those are the gaps that were in there. You will realize that in SASSA, schooling is defined as grade 1 to 12. Whereas, the Department of Basic Education has began inheriting the entire ECD from social development. We requesting parliament to give us permission to define schooling as grade R to 12. Those who have grade R in their primary schools, that grade R is not funded. Parents are funding it from their pocket. Those grade Rs are not getting teachers funded by the department. It is only through the Act, if it gets passed, that grade R will be recognized and then will be funded. And it will then become a compulsory school-going age. When you look at the bill as a department, we have been concerned about disruptions that take place in our schools. Every time communities have issues against government and local government, the first place they go to is schools and disrupt teaching and learning and close those schools. Sometimes even the SGBs themselves, when they have differences, the first thing that they deal with is to lock down the schools and prevent children from coming to school. It is in this bill that you're suggesting to criminalize activities that prevent children from going to school, that those who lock out children and stop them from attending classes should then be subjected to the might of the law and they must be subjected to a fine or imprisonment. So those are the changes that you're trying to bring in then, bringing up these penalties. Another penalty that we're thinking of is the falsifying of information, especially during the admission process, where parents will submit forged documents and falsify the information in order to get access to a school. We also want to criminalize those type of activities. The bill covers a lot around code of conduct. Our children are exposed to violence. They're exposed to bullying. And SGBs and schools are unable to deal decisively with those issues. Now, we're trying to say in the bill, let's have a code of conduct that will define differences between serious misconduct and minor misconduct and what to do with serious misconduct. That SGBs are then empowered to deal with that, just to deal with issues of violence and abuse in schools. The bill covers a lot around corporal punishment. It has been abolished in the previous SASSA. But it did not go deep in the definition of what corporal punishment is. It only focused on physical abuse. But there are a lot of examples linked to corporal punishment that you're trying to say to the teachers, these are things you should not do. The bill that you have in your hand also covers issues of initiations, especially at grade 8, as they come to school, that they need to stop these initiation practices because they are not constitutionally aligned. In the bill, there's a statement that talks about conditions for the sale or supply of alcohol in schools. How this came about is that there are schools that do sell alcohol during serious functions and sporting activities to parents. I insist to parents. During those long Saturday days when parents come to support children. But it was not regulated. There were no conditions laid by the department how that sale of alcohol should happen. What you'll find in the bill are steps that indicate what a school must do should they have such activities and would like to provide alcohol to parents during those sporting day. So it is in the bill and we're requesting that if there is a way in which you can regulate it, let's do it in that fashion. There are a lot of changes that are aligned to school governing bodies. For example, school governing bodies are not allowed to have other expertise in the community to participate in school governing bodies unless they have children. We want to make it law that should a school governing body find an expertise anywhere in the country, they could draw that person in so that he can help the SGB and perform the functions of the SGB. We need to create that space. There are more and more schools that are coming in now. Schools of specialization. Online schools are coming in. But SASSA is quiet in terms of how the SGBs of those schools need to be structured. It is through this bill that you're saying the minister needs to come up with ways in which these schools can have SGBs that are functional themselves. The bill talks a lot around issues of finance. The SGBs are custodians of the finances of the school. But we're saying to SGBs, when you draw your budget, please be transparent and tell parents everything about what you are planning to do with their money. For example, if you were to pay teachers extra money under section 38A, you need to inform the parents so that when they vote for the budget, they know exactly what they are voting for. We're also saying to school governing bodies, we would love to have financial reports on a quarterly basis. This is based on the fact that we no longer using checks, we're using debit cards. A lot goes wrong within a short period of time where money is just used carelessly. Then we're asking that may we be given the right to ask for expenditure statements on a quarterly basis, which SASSA only focuses on a year. We're also asking SGB members, especially those deal with big tenders in the school, that they declare their financial interests so that we know who is dealing with this. And they also have to declare, should they participate in the school tender, that they are probably having an interest in that type of a tender. The Bella Bill contains instructions around homeschooling. What it says is that homeschooling is part and parcel of the democracy. Homeschooling is part of public schooling, I mean, independent schooling. So parents have the right to homeschool their children. But what we're requesting as a department is that should you decide to homeschool your child, may you register, may you apply so that we know we can account for every child in the country that the child is receiving education. And as you homeschool your child, it's important that we know that you are using whatever curriculum that you want. But please do inform us. And we're not saying use caps, we're not saying use whatever. We're saying determine the curriculum. But later, you need to inform the department about the progress of the child, whether the child is progressing or not. And that you need an independent assessor to can inform us that the child is progressing. So that one day, should you wish not to continue with homeschooling, you bring the child to public schooling, we should know where to place that child. So that is what you get in the Bella Bill. At the moment, pregnant children are allowed to come to school. Teachers work with pregnant children in school. But there are no regulations of what teachers must do or how they must work with children that are pregnant. So we're requesting through the Bella Bill that we come up with regulations to guide schools on how to manage and handle children that are pregnant in a school. The Bella Bill contains issues around language policy. Why there is language policy is that we believe in mother tongue teaching. We would like children who live in a particular area to be taught in the language that they speak at home. It is not easy as it stands now because most of the language policies only recognizes English and Africans, especially in suburban schools. And the rest of the children are not allowed to even do their home language in there. So we're saying SGBs, determine your language policy. But should your language policy not be in line with the constitution of the country, we're requesting that the HOD needs to be given powers to step in so that we can have more and more languages introduced in our schools. That goes along again with the admission policy, that SGBs have the power to determine admissions. But as they determine admission, should the admission policy be discriminatory? Somebody must come in and step in and say, that clause is unconstitutional. And that is the HOD that we're requesting to step in, should there be problems so that we can have access to schooling, then we can transform schools by these type of changes that I'm requesting. Chairperson, I didn't join the song that says Happy Mother's Day. May I do it now as I sit down? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, thank you so much, Mr. Ndebe. There are few chairs here in front. If you are struggling to get people to get the chairs. We are now going to start with the proceedings of today. One, there are forms. Who's got the forms? There are forms there on that table. Those forms that are there on that table, it's for people who don't feel comfortable to come to the mic and speak. The form has got, you need to write your name, you need to write your details on it. And then you make your input by writing. If you don't, other people don't feel comfortable to come and speak in front of the crowd, you make a use of that forms. The lady is going to move around with them. Or if you feel you want to get a form, you can go to her. Those are the only forms that we accept for this process. So where we were, there were people who were coming already with their forms filled. We don't take a form like that. You must write a form here and leave it here. The reason we are doing that, we had a written submission process last year, which ended in August 2022. People has written for us, they had made their submissions. After that, we had oral submissions where people came to parliament to us to make their presentations. So now it's us going to the people and hence, you must do everything here. As an individual, you can't fill that form for your family member or for your child. You need to do it here. And if you take that form, you are not going to raise your hand to come and speak here. The people who are going to speak here are people that would not have signed the form. We are giving you three minutes to speak. Three minutes, whether you are done or not done speaking, we are stopping you. And then the next person should speak. I am going to allow people first from this side. I'm going to note, I'm going to note 10 hands. And then, when they are done, I'm going to come this side and take the other 10. And then, if there are still hands, I'm coming this side. So there's no need to think that I'm not gonna come to you. We're gonna come and allow you to speak. Sit where you are, don't move around. We're going to give you an opportunity to speak. We are using English in this public hearings, not because we think English is important, but we think everybody can identify with it. But we've got interpreters from parliament, here they are. If you don't want to speak English, speak a language that you feel comfortable in speaking. They are here, they are going to interpret. After you have spoken, being it is Kosa, being it Africans, being it Sisulu, being Sivenda, or any other official language, that includes sign language. Here they are, we've got them. They are going to interpret your language. So feel comfortable. If you want to speak, speak and speak as it is. And please, when a speaker, you don't agree with the speaker on a podium, you don't make noise. You don't make that speaker to feel she or he is saying something. We are here diverse, from different communities, different ideologies, different understanding on things. And people must be allowed to say the things they want. If you feel strongly on homeschooling, and I don't feel strongly on homeschooling, I don't have to make you feel that you are not supposed to be on the podium. If you feel strongly on home language or any other issue for that matter, you must be made. We are going to make you comfortable to use or to speak whatever that you want to say. Can I now note hands of people that wants to, that wants to speak? There is a hand, you, red cap? Yes. There is a hand with black jacket. As I note you, please go to the, please go to the podium. Okay, yourself? Yourself, five, six. Are you going to speak? Okay, alright. Puti? In that order, as I have noted it, they are going to assist you. Are you also going to speak? Okay? How many chairs do we have? This one also is going to speak. How many chairs now? Yes. I'm coming back, coming back.